Tonight, we are, we know we're not expecting Commissioner Ruth, but Commissioner Graves hasn't mentioned that he's not coming, so we'll get started and we'll talk slowly. This meeting is cable cast live on Charter Communications Cable TV Channel 8 and is being recorded to be replayed on the following Monday and Friday at 1:00 PM on Charter Channel 71 and Comcast Channel 25. Meetings can also be viewed from the city's website, www.cityofcapitola.org. Our technician tonight is the very capable Victor Herman. As a reminder, please turn off your cell phones during the meeting now would be a good time, and please sign your name up at the podium when you come up to speak. Thank you. And welcome to the October 2nd meeting of the Capitola Planning Commission. Roll call, please. Commissioner Welch?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Here.
Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now's the time for oral communications, and that means that anyone can get up and speak about anything that they would like to if it's not on tonight's agenda. Did anyone come tonight to talk about something that is not on the agenda tonight? Okay, then we'll go on to additions and deletions.
No additions or deletions, Madam Chair.
Okay. We do have, we do have, we've continued, is it on this, on the, on the agenda?
Yes, 124 Central.
So, so if, if anyone is here for 124 Central, which is item number, excuse me, 5B, we have continued that, so that won't be heard tonight.
We will need a motion for that, though.
You can go home. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion.
All seconded in?
Continue.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, then, public comments, additions or deletions. Just to let you all know, we know we're having problems at home, we know we're having problems with the mics. If you heard last night, the, the forum was pretty, pretty hard to hear, but we will do our best and hopefully get some new mics. It, it's pretty bad, can't hear. Okay, moving on then, Commissioner comments?
None.
Okay. Staff update on 116 Grand Avenue encroachment permit.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go through a series of slides for you to explain what was approved in the 116 major encroachment permit and what the existing conditions are, so.
Can you tell the, tell all of us why we're hearing this tonight?
Yeah, during the last planning commission, there were questions raised by Commissioner Welch, asking about what exactly was approved and just an overview of what the process would be to remove an encroachment permit and discuss the turnaround area in this area and for cars and safety, so.
Okay.
A major revocable encroachment agreement was approved by the planning commission on April 4th, 2013. This slide includes a picture of the gas fire pit seen in the far corner, the rock wall that goes around the, the area, a fence and landscaping. This is an aerial of the property prior to the renovations. You can see an existing white fence that's, was located right along the property line. The distance from the property line to the edge of pavement is 21 feet. During the Ark and Site meeting, the Public Works Director requested that the turnaround area be included in the plans. So originally, the landscape plan was submitted with the improvements without a turnaround This is the approved landscape plan. The yellow line is the property line. The approved plans show a 21-foot gravel turnaround. This satisfied the planning, the Public Works Director's request. Staff field verified that the fence was reinstalled at the property line. The improvements were not extended as far into the street as shown in the plans. Therefore, the turnaround area is four feet shorter than the approval, and the street remains four feet wider than approved. So, it was approved with a 25-foot depth, I mean 21-foot depth. At the time of installation, the, the fence is in the correct location, but the driveway, the turnaround area is 17 feet in the field, so they didn't actually take up four feet of the road as proposed in these plans, so it's actually set closer to the home, the This slide shows fire requirements for a turnaround area with a minimum depth of 33 feet. I'm showing this, just to clarify, that the existing conditions prior to the renovations did not comply with the fire turnaround and nor did the approval during the April meeting This is a photo of existing conditions. Currently, the turnaround area, it appears like a parking space, there's no signage. Staff is proposing to install a sign that will say turnaround only, no parking, to clarify the issue. Parking will remain in front of the home as currently allowed. But they're not, the, the parking that's on site is not technically parking spaces, but people do park there. We're just not adding any signs to say no parking in front of the home, but it also won't be painted or striped to create valid parking spots either. Commissioner Welch had raised the question regarding the bollards. The staff report noted that during the Ark and Site meeting, the Public Works Director commented that the existing bollards on Grand Avenue and Central Avenue were to remain. The bollards did remain in the original location, although bollards were removed from the areas that were landscaped. The Public Works Director visited the site and found that the bollards are adequately spaced and serve their purpose. Originally, there were six bollards in this location. The one that would have been in the landscape area was removed. The Public Works Director does not have an issue with the bollard being removed due to the spacing being adequate. This image shows the bollards along Central Avenue prior to the construction. As you can see, one bollard was removed from the area as well as, as well to accommodate the rock wall. The location of the bollard and spacing has been maintained. Again, the Public Works Director has reviewed the site and is happy with the spacing between the bollards and them serving their purpose. And back to the approved landscape plan. A gas fireplace was approved within the right-of-way, that's the area highlighted in blue, and a rock wall with fencing was also approved. This is a photo of the final landscaping. Here's a close-up of the fire pit. During the last meeting, Commissioner Welch had asked that we return with information on how to revoke a major encroachable encroachment permit. Typically, if there were plans to widen the road, the city would issue notice to the property owner 45 days in advance in the form of a letter, and they would need to remove the, the improvements at their expense. That's what is in the, the agreement. Within the current permit, because the city doesn't plan on widening the road, the planning commission would have to make findings of necessity for improving the public right-of-way. Their request to remove the encroachments would be noticed for a public hearing and a majority vote would be necessary. So, any questions you have, I'm happy to answer.
Well, this is probably, probably the time for me to comment on it, and the reason I bring this up is because if you go to maybe the second or third slide, the one that shows the neighbor's property as well, see, there, well, that, that one will work right there. So you can see the existing gravel area that's there and the existing, the, prior to the reconstruction fence line and the gravel area. So when I review for staff report, and this may change the way I do my practice, my reviewing for a meeting, I read the staff report first, I take a look at the plans. If you go to, actually, if you go to that landscape plan, it's like number two or three. So this is a landscape plan that's provided, and in that, it does show that from the property line to the fence line is 21 feet, but if you can read that, you're a better person than I am, because I really couldn't see that. My, my, where I drew my conclusion from was from the staff report that noted that Steve had said that the gravel area and the bollards were to remain. And I know this area pretty well, because I, I live there and I walk that area very, all the time. So, had the fence line been moved out, in my mind, I thought it was going to come out consistent with the other property line next to it. I probably wouldn't have had an issue with that. But had I known that that fence line was going to move out, taking away the bollard and moving out the gravel area, at the time, I wouldn't have approved it, because it would be inconsistent what we've done with other properties up there. And I think personally, what we've done is we've set ourselves up for other property owners to say, well, why can't I have the same, bring my fence line out to the same area? So I think we just have, I think, to me, it was an inconsistent application, and, and while I can say I was ignorant in the process, I was, I'd have to say I'm depending on some of that staff information. So while the staff information says not to remove bollards and, and the gravel area, and now he thinks everything is fine, that's his opinion, but I based my position on that wording, that I guess was not carried into the conditions of the, the finding, so. I'm, I personally, I'm just not comfortable with that.
Other comments?
Can you just go back to the first slide you just showed? So, I just want to be clear on what you're saying. If the fence line had come out to, even with the fence line, you're talking about the-
Correct. With the neighbor's fence line, I would have been, yeah, that, I would have been satisfied with that. I, I wouldn't have a problem with that, but I think what we've done, we've, we've enlarged that area so much that it's, obviously give them a benefit of property value and stuff, that the others in the area are going to want to have the same thing.
It shouldn't affect property values, because when the property doesn't go out that far, it's a, it's in a right-of-way.
Ask anybody who appraises property, because I just went through this with an appraiser up there, and the perceived value is much higher. That just might, I'm, this is just what I'm, I've gained from talking to other people. So, while I understand it shouldn't, I think what it has done, though, is set an inconsistent policy. So now, the neighbor to the left there, to the west, I mean, what's going to keep, prevent us from saying no to those people, or that they can't have their fence line in the same To me, it just was, it's, I think we set ourselves up for an inconsistent practice. That's just my personal opinion.
Is, is there something that you would like to do about that?
I, it sounds like we can't do anything now. It sounds like, you know, I don't know that we can find a finding. I think by putting the turnaround area so it's, public, some marks was a public turnaround area, certainly will help. And, and then, just ensuring that that red zone across the street is kept open, and, and often cars park there illegally, but to me, I think that's the only thing we can do.
And the, the night of the planning commission also, there is a technical difficulty with the presentation, so I think this item may have been resolved at planning commission had the landscape plan-
There was no PowerPoint that night, no slides to look from, and so we were dependent on the words we had in front of us, right?
So hopefully, it would be prevented through conversations during the hearings and looking at site plans in the future.
So, my question is, when we put up that sign, do we have any recourse for ticketing or for, does the city, even though it's not public property, what happens if somebody parks in that turnaround?
It actually is in part of the right-of-way, so I believe they could be ticketed by-
So if a neighbor saw someone parked over a weekend, it could be a visitor to the property, or somebody who just didn't, wasn't, you know, was, wanted to do whatever they wanted to do? The neighbor, neighbors could call and get that car towed or ticketed or whatever?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to know. Now, I believe this was not only brought up by you, but it was brought up by one of the neighbors.
Yes, there's been an issue, we actually received a letter regarding people trying to turn around on the neighboring property and issues with the fence, the gate being tapped and pushed off of its runner.
Talked to those folks?
They're actually here tonight, I believe, as well, so-
And so even though this isn't a public hearing, I feel like we need to hear everybody, and if that's all right with staff, I'd like to call up whoever's here who would like to speak about it, or if you feel satisfied with what happened, to come on up if you would like to speak about it.
Okay.
And identify yourself and speak into the mic.
My name is Berna Brizoni, and my husband and I own the property at 116 Grand. If anybody had seen this property before we took it over and saw that nothing had been done with it since the 40s, it was an unusual situation in that it was so overgrown and it was so much, the previous owners had just used gravel as a, an improvement to the property. If we had only come out looking in hindsight and just left gravel, you would have had an ongoing erosion problem. What I feel, what we've created by doing the asphalting and doing it all the way around as we were required, we've helped to eliminate water erosion also.
Okay.
And I, I think it's unusual, like I say, the property, I don't think you're going to have, have residents come in in droves now wanting to do, you know, bring their fence out or do more. This was a solution to, Capitola did not want to do any improving to that property on either side. And when we started digging into it and saw how much property was there, the only solution to really make that what it is, is, is to do the project as it, as it's completed. You couldn't have left four feet of gravel there, it, it didn't make, wouldn't have made any sense, in front of the fence. Does that make sense?
Oh, I understand your position.
Yeah.
I don't necessarily agree with it, but I understand your position.
Okay. Do you want me to sign this, too?
Thank you very much, yes.
Okay, sure.
Yeah. Is there anybody else tonight here?
And keeping, can I say one more thing? And keeping that, because she and I have talked about her fence, and I've seen cars come in, if you do mark our area as a turnaround, I think it would alleviate my neighbor's problem with people bumping it. I really think that's a good idea, saying that this is a, an official turnaround spot. If that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Starlee Moore, and I live at 114 Grand. The, the only issue I really have right now with that, I know, it's kind of a can of worms, they got opened there, and so I don't really want to discuss anything tonight rather than the turnaround. But that, even if we marked that as a turnaround, it is so skinny that it's, people still are using my driveway. I mean, I could put a camera out there and, you know, just show you, I mean, it's, it's consistent throughout the day, that people are constantly turning, turning around in my driveway, so.
The sign's not there yet, right?
No.
Okay.
But I'm just saying that as it exists, it is extremely skinny. There is, there's a utility pole right there that also makes it difficult to pull into that area. I don't know if you can see that.
Right there.
So my, my, personally, for me, my only concern is, is that I've, I've incurred cost, and it doesn't just get tapped, it gets, it gets significantly hit to knock, it's a very heavy gate, to knock it off of its trolley. And, and the electronic eye has also been damaged before, too. So I'm just incurring costs of people, you know, continuing to use my driveway as the turnaround, so, you know, any, I just want a resolution to that. You know, I don't really have an opinion tonight on where the fence line or fire pit or whatever is going on. I know that there, you know, are concerns about that, though, in the neighborhood.
Thank you.
So, that's it.
What's the width of the driveway again? I was out there measuring today, and it matches the plans, but I want to say 12 feet.
Oh, that's, that's pretty wide, right?
Yeah.
I mean, is it eight feet, eight feet's our minimum?
10 feet.
10.
10 feet. Well, nine, nine feet.
The issue with, I think, is, is that the new fence line comes out almost to where the end of the red rectangle is on the street side.
Uh huh.
And so I think people, when they back, if they pull in there, they feel uncomfortable backing, because there's not a arch or anything, it's just a, it's a fence line that comes out that's rather sharp there, so.
Right.
Yeah.
I think they feel more comfortable pulling into the open space to the left, and then, yeah, you see how narrow it is, like that? So with the rock wall there, it's-
Could I say one more thing?
Yes.
The driveway is the original size, is the original driveway, when we bought the place, wide. But, in fact, Starlee and I had talked about this once before. When you come up and you're coming onto Grand, there's no signage that says no through road. And that last sign that says no parking, right by the stairs, I would really love to see some, something put there, like they've done on Central, that says no through traffic. And I think that would really cut down, that area is a wider part of the, you know, down by the apartments, and they, maybe it'd be more conducive to turning around there, oh, the road doesn't go through, instead of people coming down thinking that there's, they're going to find a parking lot down there.
Mm-hmm.
That would be my suggestion, you know, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I would agree, the driveway's the same width, but your fence line wasn't out that far before, so.
Mm.
I just happen to hang out across the street watching the surf often, so I've had many opportunities to watch cars pull in and out, and that was a common turnaround, turnaround area. And that whole street is a terrible area. In fact, there's many cars with dents on the side of their doors and stuff from people backing and turning around up there, but it's just a, it's just a poor area, and I think maybe some street signs would help alleviate some of that, maybe.
Yeah, no through, no through road would really be nice.
Maybe even on Central before you turn off to Fair.
Yeah. I can bring that up to the Public Works Director tomorrow. Thank you. I would like to see us put, you know, put, install all the signing, signage, and see if that makes any difference, and, and if there is still an issue, these folks can still bring it back, and we can continue to try to work on this. But let's try, let's work, let's see what, let's hope this will work, let's hope this number, oh, sorry, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Foni Mosha, I live around the corner, and what Berna's done to her property is lovely. It, on Central, it was a, it was a pretty funky area with a lot of foliage, and it was kind of no man's land. But, so it's great. My issue ends up being consistency with what we choose to do. Like, is it really okay for everyone to go there 10 feet out in the right-of-way and, and put the fences and the rock walls out there and gain, it's not officially gaining property, because it's not owned by the property owner, but it, when the rock wall is out there and it's mortared in, the city, we're pretty sure the city isn't going to put in sidewalks. So, for now, for probably for our lifetime, it is gaining property. It's gaining landscapable, usable space. So, do we want to make it okay for everyone to push out the 10 feet? And maybe we do. I mean, we just did a front yard, and we chose not to, because we have a good-sized front yard. So that's, it's not an issue for me, but I do think it's something to, the, the board should consider, the commission, on when, what are you going to say yes to and what are you going to say no to? I don't think this was a unique property. I know Berna thinks it was with the erosion and all that, but I see it all along the cliff, and I think it's something you should just consider, that how do we want to draw the line here, and when is it okay, and when is it not? And they're revocable, but they won't be, mostly, so.
Yeah. This has been an issue since I was on the planning commission, before I was on the council, way back in the mid 90s, so. And I know it was an issue before that, and it's not just an issue on the cliff, it's an issue all over Depot Hill, and, and I believe that the solutions have been varied since the beginning. There is no consistency throughout all of Depot Hill, and maybe we want to take a look at that when we redo our ordinances and make sure we can handle that. My understanding was that that, some sort of wall was there before the remodel, so it wasn't as if they put a wall up, but there was some kind of wall there?
No.
Did I hear that from staff?
She has a picture of the prior, there was no wall there.
If there was a wall, it was hidden behind the foliage.
Yeah, I guess, I'm thinking-
There was the other property down the way.
The other property down the way.
The other property.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else here tonight? Okay. Okay, then. We'll see how the signage works for us, and keep our fingers crossed. Thank you all for coming out. We're going to go on to approval of the minutes for the September 4th meeting of the planning commission. Any additions or corrections? No, I would move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Onto consent calendar, we have three items on tonight's consent calendar. They are Grand Avenue Bluff, a coastal development permit for landscaping improvements on a vacant lot location in the coastal bluff in R1 Single Family Residence zoning district. We have a 1740 Wharf Road redesign modification of a, of a previously permitted, or previously approved permit for a single-family residence. And we have 111 Central, which is a design permit for a second-story addition to an existing single-family residence that's coming back to us for a second hearing. Are there any, is there anyone here tonight that would like to pull any of those items? Would you step forward, which, which items are, if you'd step forward and let us know?
111 Central. Yeah, 111 Central.
111 Central you want to pull? Okay. Anybody else here for that? If you'd raise your hand, okay. And is there anyone else who would like to pull something from the consent calendar? Commissioners? All right, then, let us go ahead and, and approve the remaining consent calendar, and I think we can go ahead and hear 111 Central right after, as the first public hearing, as long as everybody's okay with that. I'll move approval of the consent calendar with those two items.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Okay, then, we'll move on to public hearings. And the first public hearing tonight will be at 111 Central, which is the design permit for a second-story addition to an existing single-family residence in the R1 single-family residential area. And this is a second hearing for this, the, there were modifications as requested by neighbors, and so staff report, please.
Good evening, commissioners. Before-
Before you is an application for a design permit and coastal development permit for a second-story addition to an existing home. The project is located at 111 Central in the R1 Single Family Residential Zoning District. On September 4th, 2014, the application was considered by the Planning Commission. The Commissioners decided to continue the application to the next Planning Commission meeting on October 2nd, today, due to several concerns that arose during the meeting. The following issues were raised by the Commissioners and the public during the hearing. Overall massing of the home, variance for the parking, privacy between neighbors, window placement, preservation of the front yard maple tree, and building height. The proposed revisions are intended to address concerns raised during that September 4th Planning Commission hearing. The revised project plans reduce the home's height by five inches, reduce the second-story addition by 119 square feet, replaces each of the second-story windows on the north elevation with opaque windows for added privacy for 113 Central. In order to reduce the second-story square footage, the applicant set the north-side second-floor wall plane further back from the property line from six feet to seven and a half feet. This additional north-side setback provides additional privacy for the neighbor at 113. The revised plans decrease the overall square footage, so a variance is no longer necessary for the parking. The current proposal is for 2,000 square feet, which requires one covered and one cover, or one covered and one uncovered parking space. The property currently contains these two parking spaces, therefore, the front yard maple tree will be preserved. Here you can see the existing lower floor plan, and here is the proposed. The proposal calls for a bathroom remodel on the first floor, and to enclose the existing single-car garage. These two modifications are internal and do not increase the floor area ratio of the residence. Here's the existing upper floor plan. The upstairs is currently 431 square feet. The applicant is proposing to enlarge the second story by 445 square feet, 119 square feet less than the previous proposal. The second-story addition consists of a new master bedroom and bathroom, an office and a bedroom. The second story is proposed to be a total of 876 square feet. In addition, the applicant would like to replace the existing 90-square-foot front entrance deck, on the southern side of the home, with a 315 square feet of concrete pavers, and replace the existing 140-square-foot rear yard deck with a 260-square-foot deck. The deck is not calculated as a part of the floor area ratio, due to the fact that it's less than 30 inches in height. Here you can see the existing elevations, and here are the proposed. The applicant is proposing to reuse and refinish the existing redwood lap siding along the exterior of the home. The second-story additions will contain dark gray smooth stucco finish with a half-inch aluminum screed to break up the facade. The existing garage door will be replaced with a garage door with opaque glass panels, and the existing steel entry gate will be replaced to match the new garage door. So here you can see the street views, both existing and proposed. The only difference, though, is on the proposed, those two trees in front of 111 Central will be maintained. So recommendations, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve Application 1499, based on the conditions and findings for approval.
Thank you very much. Questions for staff? No questions for staff, then I will open the public hearing. Is, would the representative like to speak for the applicant? Is there anyone else here to speak tonight on this issue? Would you like, did you want to speak, sir?
Hello, I'm John Glean, I'm the neighbor at 113 Central. And I was just reviewing the plans today. And generally, they're pretty good, I like the changes that they made, but the calculations were inaccurate. I had, I measured it, I verified it with them, and I verified it with an architect. And there's still 100, I mean, 24 to 27 square feet over the 2,000 limit, they were supposed to reduce 119, and it only is 90-something feet reduced. So, you know, I'm still concerned about the mass effect of this, the impact on my, on my place, and I was just wondering if they can, you know, follow the, the rules that were set out in the last one, you know, at 2,000 square foot. And the, my majors, I mean, a lot of the changes are better, and I really appreciate, you know, there's a little bit more to go, maybe, and that's the, the back of the house, which, you know, is over, adjacent to my backyard, is a large two-story mass that's going to affect the feeling of being closed in and shaded out from that. So I was wondering maybe if, you know, they could reduce some of the mass in that point, if they can't find it anywhere else, but those are my concerns.
Thank you. Anyone else here tonight to talk about this? Okay, then I'll close the public hearing, and ask the Commissioners their comments.
Well, I guess my question would be, did you review that, and is that in fact the case? Is this mic working? My mic's...
It's my understanding that Ryan met with the gentleman moments ago, they looked at some numbers, and there might be a minor miscalculation of some 20 square feet. My suggestion would be if the Planning Commission's inclined to approve it, we could go back, verify the numbers, and if it's your liking, we can have them shave off the 20 square feet or so, to make it the 2,000 square feet or less threshold for the parking.
I have to say that I was really pleased to see the, the application come back with the changes that we had asked for. That is a significant one, because it does review, remove the variance. So I would be inclined to support it with the accuracy of, you know, that, that removal.
I too feel like the applicant really went, went to the place that we were looking for them to go. I think they, they acquiesced a lot on this, and I feel comfortable with the amount that they have changed. I, I, I know Capitola's a tiny little place, and we all feel like somebody is over us. There's somebody over everybody. We all want second-story houses, and if you have a second-story house, you need to kind of assume that the person next to you is going to have a second-story house as well. And lot sizes vary, but we have to give, you know, we have, these guys comply with everything. There is really no reason not to give them this permit to do this, in my eyes. So, I know it's going to be a change for the neighbors, we've all gone through these changes in Capitola, this is kind of what happens in Capitola. But if we want changes to the building envelope, we want smaller houses, we encourage citizens to come out during the ordinance changes, and we need to change that in the ordinances. But tonight, I don't think is the time to do that, so I would be willing to support this application as well. So, do we have a motion? Let's see, well, and if the motion could include the staff making sure that the numbers that are represented in this report are really the numbers that are going to be built.
Then I would make a motion that we move the project forward, approving it, with staff's review of the numbers and making sure they're correct.
I'd second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much, everybody, for coming out. Okay, then, we'll go on to 100 Oakland Avenue, major revocation, revocable encroachment permit and variance application for a bench and fireplace located within the front yard and right-of-way of 100 Oakland Avenue, located in the Single Family Residential Zoning District. Staff report, please.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Teas, and Commissioners. The application under review is for a major revocable encroachment permit, variance and coastal permit for a fire pit and bench located in the front yard and right-of-way of 100 Oakland Avenue. This is a close-up of the site plan with the landscape improvements. The red dashed line is the property line. The area between the property line and the edge of pavement is referred to as the private improvement area. This may shed some more light on what is and is not allowed within the private improvement area. This is under Chapter 12 of the Muni Code. Improvements in this area, other than mailboxes, fences, walkways, driveways, and landscaping, require a major revocable encroachment permit. And those are approved by the Planning Commission. The fire pit and bench are fixed structures that were installed within the private improvement area. The fireplace is also located within the setbacks, therefore, a variance is required. Here is a photo of the improvements. You can see the fireplace and the bench, they have an ornate glass wave going through There are four items that must be considered by the Planning Commission when reviewing a major encroachment permit. Within a revocable hold harmless agreement, the applicant agrees to removal of the structure at their expense when so ordered by the city. The fire pit and bench fit within the existing neighborhood, they do not impede views, and they would not be considered a granting of special privileges. The Planning Commission may approve a major permit if they find that the benefit to the applicant and community is determined to exceed the detriment to the community. Fire pits, as we previously discussed, this one fits within the neighborhood, and it's behind an existing shrub, so it's not impeding any views. Fire pits are associated with nighttime use and smoke. To mitigate this, the applicant plans to use duralogs to decrease the impacts of the smoke. Also, a condition has been added to reinforce the city noise ordinance. Staff has also included, there's condition number five, that the application shall be reviewed by the Planning Commission upon evidence of noncompliance. So if there were issues with noise or smoke, it could come before this board, again, for To grant a variance, the Planning Commission must find that there are special circumstances applicable to the subject property, and that the variance is not a grant of special privileges. The property at 100 Oakland is located on a cliff overlooking the open space of the Monterey Bay. Properties along the cliff utilize the side yard that looks out onto the ocean, as most residents utilize their backyards, with areas to entertain, dine, play, and relax. This would not be considered a granting of special privileges, as similar requests have been approved previously along Grand. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve Application 14-135. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
So this is a wood-burning fire pit, and not a gas fire pit?
That's correct.
Okay. And we've approved wood-burning fire pits along Grand in the past?
There, the wood-burning fire pit that was in the right-of-way is not a wood-burning, it's a gas. There are, there's a wood-burning fire pit that complies with setbacks at 100 Oakland, but it's not within the right-of-way area.
Thank you.
Great. And I noticed staff doesn't, doesn't actually have the duralogs in a condition, is that, was there a reason for that?
I think it'd be really hard to enforce.
Okay. Just wanted to hear. Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Well, the only, the only question I had was, the staff report does say it's a propane, and since, it doesn't say it's LP, a fire pit? Did I misread that? I did go by and look at it, and it does not have propane to it, so, and the occupant did say it was going to be wood-burning, but I was just curious, I thought, I thought I read in here that it said it's going to have liquid propane fire pit.
Oh, it does say it on the plan, on the plans. Propane gas fire pit.
But I, I think that's incorrect. I think, when I went and buy there, there's no method of getting the propane in there, there's no piping or gas lines or anything else, so I would have to assume it's going to be a wood fire pit.
Is the applicant here tonight? Would you like to speak? You don't have to, don't, you know, don't...
Hi. So, my name is Margarita Jimenez, and I am representing the owner, which is Jim Castellanos, and we cohabitate there. And one of the reasons that we did not go with the, didn't, we didn't use the gas lines is because it was an afterthought, and so putting in a fire pit after the fact, and it was more, you know, a personal thing, Jim didn't want it, I did at the last second, so, but all the little gas lines had already been run at that point, so it was one of those, we're going to make an amendment on it. And one of the reasons that I don't want to burn wood is simply because I don't want to burn wood. It's the, the duralogs will suffice, I just don't want to burn down another tree. So that was why that went into position. We stayed aesthetically to the property, and stayed, you know, where we made it safe enough, where we were away from the existing, the existing wall, the existing shrub that actually goes along the line. So we followed the lines and stayed further forward into the property. I thought that we had actually come in far enough that we weren't encroaching on the property line, but when we laid it out, obviously, it did not happen. And the original paperwork that we sent out had like this 40-foot bench drawn into it, and we brought it down to a 24, because it looked absurd when we actually put it out there, you know, and drew it out on the ground, it was just too much. So what we tried to do is improve the property without, without making it something that was aesthetically incorrect, and that our neighbors, because we do have two-story neighbors, would have, you know, any problem with. And we did touch base with all of them, and, you know, made sure that there were absolutely no neighbor issues.
All right, great, thank you. Questions for the applicant?
No.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you so much for coming.
Foni Moshe, again.
Can you pull the mic down, please, just a little bit?
Yeah, it goes down pretty easily. It sounds funny, but it's okay.
I think the fire pit is beautiful, I've seen it, and it's lovely, but once again, I'm wondering, this is after the fact, so what's the protocol? Is it correct to come in and ask for forgiveness for building something that should have had a permit prior to building? So I, that's, that's my only question. I think it's lovely. I think it's, I don't have an issue with what was done, I just have an issue with people coming in and doing what they want to do without getting the proper permits first, and then coming and saying, "Oh, so sorry," and getting, maybe sometimes even paying a fine, and they don't care, because, not in this case necessarily, but people have money and come in and will happily pay a fine for doing something after the fact that wasn't done properly to begin with. So if we can somehow come up with a way for people to follow the rules, that's all I'm asking.
If you come up with that, let us know. That's why you're here.
Thank you.
May I have a lead, sir?
Yes, you may.
There we go.
We don't usually, yes, you have to come up to the front, because people at home are listening, and we don't usually like to go back and forth, so we...
I totally agree with her. My belief was, we ended up putting a bond forward so that we could, because we have a second phase to this property to do, and we weren't sure if we wanted to actually do any of the landscaping up front, because by the time we start doing some of the demolition on the next phase, that it would actually, then we would destroy what we were, had built. So we, we put a bond in place, because we didn't think that we were going to do something, and then we put Phase Two aside for a year or so. So based on the bond, we had submitted the paperwork, and when, my belief was that once we got the bond approved by the city, and it went through the finance division and so forth, that it had been looked at, and that it was approved. So my understanding was, I wasn't going building something and coming back and saying, "Hey, sorry, guys, you know, King's X, it's built," that I actually believed that because we had the bond, that it was, and that piece of paper was there, that it had been approved, and so I, otherwise, I would not have, I would not have done what, you know, what it is. So, so that was it.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? I'm going to close the public hearing, and ask the Commissioners for their comments.
Well, I'll, I'll jump in. I went and looked at the property today, although I couldn't really get in behind it and, and see what you've shown in the photographs, so I really appreciate seeing the photograph. So I really appreciate seeing the photograph. I have always been concerned about wood burning fireplaces and wood burning fire pits and wood burning chimneys and wood burning anything. And in the past, there have been applications for wood, new wood burning appliances, if you will, that I have looked at from the perspective of, is the smoke going to bother somebody? Is the smoke going to cause health issues, irritation issues for another resident? Or, you know, people in, the last one that we looked at was actually a commercial application. And I looked at this property from that perspective really carefully. And it is, it is in the right location to have a wood burning. And the duraflam log, I think, is, is a wonderful thing and would be really wonderful if it could be a condition. But difficulty to enforce, I also understand. But I don't see where the residents that surround this property are going to be inundated with smoke from a wood burning fireplace if the current, if the current owners were to move and someone else were to move in and burn wood. I, I still don't see where that's going to become a hazard. So that was my number one concern. The second concern that I had when I went out was what we looked at just up the street where we've just given, excuse me, permission for this to happen. And the hedge that is there, that wasn't planted yesterday, wasn't planted last year. It's been there for a really long time. So the use of that part of public property has not been open to the public in a long time. It's something that the owners would assume that they've got use for and assuming that the city's not gonna come in and say, take that hedge out, it's a beautiful hedge. And it, it does, it does add a lot of aesthetic value there on that walking bluff. Excuse me, so I think it's really different from the one down the street. And I don't see where it is going to be an issue with access for turnaround or any other kind of, of public use. In the event that the bluffs continue to degrade and the city chooses to protect the walking path, I can see where we might come to a day that says, you know, the hedge has to get out and all of these structures need to get out. But today, I don't see where it really intrudes on anything that was already there. So I could, I could support providing an encroachment permit for this specific situation. Thank you.
I agree with Commissioner Smith. I took a look at it and aside from the hedge, there's also a rock wall below that hedgeway that's been there for quite a, quite a bit of time. But I, I, I think our conditions put in for this, the revocable encroachment permit that allows it, us to come back. It should, and that, I would see that at some point in some decade, maybe long after we're gone, that we may wanna widen that walking path or, once it starts eroding. And, and that could be a possibility where that would have to be, you know, the enclosure might be able to be revoked and move that area. But as for now, I think it's a, you know, it's a nice asset to the property and it doesn't give any special service to anybody outside of them exclusively other than what we've given before. So I could support this.
Thank you. I'm in agreement with both Commissioners. Do I hear a motion?
I so move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. Got a lot of nice participation tonight, I appreciate it. The next item on the agenda, let's see, we are finished with our, no, we are, I'm sorry, we are not finished with our public hearing. The last public hearing on tonight's agenda is a green building ordinance amendment. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a brief presentation for you this evening. Staff is proposing some amendments to the green building ordinance. As you may recall, this ordinance was adopted in May 2008 with the intent to promote sustainable development and improved energy efficiency. The green building regulations apply to non-residential additions and/or exterior remodels which are 1,000 square feet or greater, as well as residential additions or remodels which exceed 350 square feet. As part of the green building ordinance, a green building education fund was established. Projects subject to the green building regulations are assessed a quarter percent tax on their total building valuation that gets deposited into the green building education fund. The way the ordinance is written today, those funds may only be used for program management, staff training and public educational purposes. And these restrictions have made it very difficult to use the monies. Over the last several years, we've accumulated $122,000 in funds. And on average, depending on building activity, we've collected about $21,000 in new fees each year. There's a number of programs and state mandated requirements that are gonna require significant city investment over the next couple of years. Principal amongst those are water quality and stormwater pollution prevention programs. And then our climate action measures to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. In addition to that, there's the water conservation initiatives that, while not necessarily mandated by the state, I think as stewards of the environment, the city wants to do more to conserve our water usage. So what staff is proposing to do is to amend the ordinance to expand the allowable uses of the green building funds. The text is before you and the changes are highlighted in yellow. The key part of it is that it would be changed to allow us to fund incentive programs, materials and supplies necessary to promote sustainable development, water conservation, stormwater pollution prevention and climate action planning activities. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
Actually, I do. And I don't wanna get on a pulpit, but I have a huge pet peeve with this green building ordinance. To me, it's a tax, it's not a fee. And, and part of that is, is really there's nothing in return for the, the people who ever have to apply for a permit or whatever, and the applicant, in return for this fee they paid to the city. And I kinda have a problem with that. I think, you know, building can be expensive. Not everyone has the same means to afford to build houses. And when you're down at the very end, you're trying to decide whether, what type of flooring you can put in and what type of finishing you can put on a house sometimes. And I think sometimes we just get out of control with these fees. This, this to me is just, there's, has just been a tax that puts funds into a bank account that really has no purpose or use. And so here we are, what's been six, seven years later, and we have this fund. And I don't wanna put you guys on the spot, but do we have a program developed? Is there a method for spending the, the funds that we currently have? Training programs or educational materials out there?
You know, the, the building department does attend some trainings at the builder time against. We have printed out a few brochures here and there that we've used that money for, but it's, it's been very little. And part of the purpose here is to try to find ways to spend the money which benefit the community, which advance a lot of our general plan goals without raiding general fund coffers.
For me, I would say either give the money back to the people and, and just do away with the, the ordinance, which it's not gonna happen. So secondly, I guess my, my suggestion would be is to find a way that it benefits the applicants so they have something to work with. I mean, we, you have a checklist, we, we get that. But I think there's other regulations and policies that pretty much afford people to build a house that meets the green requirements already. And to me, it's just another add-on that makes it difficult for individuals trying to build a home of residence. And I personally see no need for it. But if we're gonna have it and it's not gonna go away, then let's find a way that it benefits the applicant themselves. I'll get off my pulpit now.
And you, staff, can you outline any ways in the added programs and incentives and things like that that would benefit the applicant?
Yeah. The climate action plan, when, it's gonna have a series of measures that are required to be implemented to reduce greenhouse gases. Some of those are gonna be city expenses. Unfortunately, some will get passed on to developers and home builders. By using some of this money, we may be able to take things that would ordinarily cost applicants money and use those as incentive programs to fund some of that work. So it could offset some of the other mandated requirements that citizens would be burdened with.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any way to write in there that it focuses on incentive programs as a priority?
You could. You know, but again, I guess my recommendation would be not to narrow the use of funds to the point, again, where we have a difficult time spending it. We could spend a lot of the money on education or training right now. I'm not sure how beneficial that would be, though. So I, I'd like to spend the money with something that has a meaningful purpose. These other programs are gonna need to be funded somehow. So if, if we don't use the green building monies, we'll probably be looking at general fund dollars or some other type of funding source to implement those programs.
Well, I would just hope that there's as many incentives built into whatever program we start as possible because I think there is no better way to train us, human beings, than to give us money.
I agree. And one example, the city council last week considered the rain barrel program. And they were very interested to find a way to subsidize that program and make it cheaper for residents to buy a rain barrel. This would've been a perfect use of that money. So that, anyone that's interested in reducing runoff and stormwater pollution, we could've helped them purchase it.
Well, now you, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, is, is that something we could put in there?
It is.
So if, if that's the case, because the city council's looking at, I think, buying 100 rain barrels off the start, but primarily looking at seniors. So maybe that's something we could put in there that would be specific enough that gives back to the community and, and not just, you know, as a takeaway. I could support something like that.
Are you suggesting that it goes in there? Or we just rely on staff?
I would rather see it in there. And, you know, this is gonna go to city council. We're just trying to prove a, an orange before we get to city council. And I, I know it's probably thinking it's just a pass through, but I would like to see that there's something that shows that we're gonna give back to the, the community and not just take another tax and penalize people who are trying to build a home.
Would the rain barrel program fall under the definition of an incentive program?
It would. And it, it would only be a fraction of the funds there. So again, I would, I would ask for caution to narrow it to the point where we can only use it for one or two programs. And the money just sits there and we tax people and don't provide any benefit for it.
If you just added, where you say incentives, just added, including the rain barrel program or a rain barrel program?
I, you know, that's on the city council's lap.
For example.
I would, I would.
I can certainly pass that idea to them when we go to them in a couple of weeks.
Right, I, I could live with it. If that, if that is the intent that we can move forward with that, I, I trust your intent and I, I trust that city council will make the right decision.
Good, me too.
Well, with the incentives piece added in there, I would move approval of the.
It's the public hearing, I have to open the public hearing. Oh, sorry, it's okay. Is there anyone here, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here tonight that is here to talk about this issue? But you all seem so interested. I'm glad, I'm glad you're still here. Okay then, I'll close the public hearing and.
And now I can make my motion. I will move approval of the changes as stated.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, staff, good. Glad we're doing this. All right then. We've closed the public hearing portion. The last part of tonight's agenda is the Director's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few items this evening. The zoning ordinance survey, as you know, has been up for the past couple of months. We have extended that to October 15th. So if anybody's at home and is meaning to do it and you still have another 12, 13 days to do it, and we do appreciate everybody's participation. We are gonna be interviewing housing element consultants next week to get that project going. Commissioner Smith has graciously offered her time to help us screen some of the candidate firms. And the climate action plan, we're making some progress. We did present a list of draft greenhouse gas reduction measures to the Commission on the Environment last week. They're gonna review those over the next month, give us some feedback. And with that, we'll start preparing the draft climate action plan. And before it hits the street, we'll come back before your commission and give you an update and refresh your memory on what we're doing with that project. Finally, Monarcho, we do get questions from time to time. What's going on there? There's really no news to report. There was an interested buyer. It's my understanding they pulled out of that deal and the project is right now, has been suspended. It's not being actively processed. I think the owner's evaluating their options. And that concludes my Director's Report this evening.
Thank you. I've got a couple of comments about your report. And that is, the first one was the survey for the ordinance update. I, I'm not sure everybody really understands, I, I know I didn't before I got involved in city government, what, what the ordinance is due. And I think if I boiled it down in this way, it might make more people want to fill out this survey online. And that is, if there's anything in this city that you think is allowed, whether it's signage, lot coverage, setbacks on houses, lots of different things. If you think there is something in this city that you are not happy with right now, that's why you need to fill out this survey. And you need to put down in the spaces that are allotted for, for other comments, correct? If it's not covered on the survey, you can always put down under comments. This is your chance to get your, one, your first chance, let's say, to get your voice heard about that. So I just wanted to bring that up. It's online, www.cityofcapitola.org. Org, thank you. And then the housing element. Do you anticipate anything major in this new housing element? Like what's, anything the state has mandated again?
No, I'm cautiously optimistic that it'll be smoother than somewhere our past experiences. The RENA numbers came back the same as it was in the last cycle. The only units that were built during that period were the ones at Bay Avenue. So we do have, I believe off the top of my head, eight extremely low units we need to find a site for.
Eight, eight?
Eight units.
Eight units total.
Right. There's 143 or 46 total, but those sites were zoned during the last cycle and they haven't been occupied, so they're still available. There is a new streamlined approach that HCD has offered. We're gonna try to go down that road. The one sticking point is, is that to qualify, you have to adopt the supportive and transitional housing into your zoning ordinance. I know that my predecessors tried to get that done. It didn't get adopted. We'll probably take another run at that to find out if we wanna take advantage of that or not. There could be a cost implication if we choose to do the more thorough, painful housing element update process. But like I said, I'm cautiously optimistic.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the reports? Okay then, Commissioner Communications?
I have one comment. And I know I probably should've done it earlier, but 124 Central kind of flowed through really quickly